Call the meeting to order, please. This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees regular meeting for Thursday, September 21st, 2017. The time is 7:00 PM. Please call the roll.
President Salz.
Here.
Trustee Powell.
Here.
Trustee Gisa.
Here.
Trustee Lomston.
Here.
Trustee Balleray.
Here.
Trustee Settling.
Here.
Trustee Peters.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Molina.
Here.
Also present Village Thirteenth.
Please join us with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome everyone who is here with us tonight and those watching at home. If you are here with us and you'd like to make a public comment or address the board, you may do so at any time. I just ask that you be recognized by the President and that you make your comments from the podium so that folks at home can hear and see what you have to say. First up is public comment. Would anyone like to address the board? Yes, please. Yes, please.
I'm Elaine Roglis and I live at 119 Norton Road. And today I want to speak about the Riverside Community Garden. So this is a project that came about from community support. And what we're envisioning is a garden with beds where both old and young community members can come together to share their knowledge, to learn, to provide education, to support the Riverside food pantry, to support the monarch butterflies and other pollinators, and to grow vegetables and other edibles in a community building forum. So we've had a lot of community support. We have over 50 volunteers who have been interested in actually building the garden, maintaining it, or renting space in it. There are a number of local businesses that are interested in providing lumber and other materials needed for building the garden. We have a number of Eagle Scouts who have expressed interest in actually doing the building of the project. And we have a number of businesses that have volunteered their time pro bono. And of course, our challenge is that we don't have land. So we initially looked at privately owned land, but that hasn't panned out. So we're now looking for village land. So we're here today asking, can we use village land? There are specifically two places that we've evaluated that look ideal for building a community garden. The first is Patriots Park. So Patriots Park has access to water. It has a fire hydrant. It's right next to the children's play area, which makes it, and it's contained, it's already fenced off on the back, makes it a very safe area. There isn't a lot of through traffic. And there's a grassy area that's already been mowed and maintained by some residents. So it would be an easy place to sort of put a garden without it being in anybody's way with access to water relatively cheaply to be able to make it happen and install it. The second location is Indian Gardens. So in Indian Gardens, there is a water faucet that's already there that would be very easy to bring water to the garden. And it's also away from the road, so it's not visible. If you wanted to maintain the forest look without the garden being visible, it would be quite easy to do that in this location. So Dig Right in Landscaping is a local landscaping company, and they have provided us with a garden plan that includes raised beds, a children's area, a picnic area, a place to bring our community together with graphics from sort of everything that it'll look like. So I will, can I leave that, pass that around? So my request today is, will the village consider giving use of village land in one of those two locations to the Riverside Community Garden?
I think the best way to handle this is you should have sit down with our village manager and our community development director, and then they can provide some staff advice and input to the board. We can't just consider it on the fly like this. It would have to be presented on an agenda and then where, when we could have a fuller discussion about it. But with this information, if you could just get in touch with Jessica and Sonya, they can, they can work with you to present something to the board.
And I probably also have the Parks and Rec Director also sitting on it since it is parkland area.
I'm wondering if this isn't a, a presentation that should first go through the Park and Rec Board, since you're, you're looking at, you know, both areas are, are parkland. So this is, I think something that they should, they should weigh in on.
They directed me here.
The Board did?
The Parks and Recs. Yes.
Mr. Macchiotti did?
We were talking during the meeting. We just said she had requ, she had sent me an email and I said, I don't have her view to grant village land. So that would have to be a village board and a Rec Board decision, which is basically what you said.
So if that's the initial step, then we can proceed that way?
Well, maybe you can get me in.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that would probably be better. And then you guys can talk about it, whether you think it's something that's feasible, something you could recommend. And then it can go through staff and then finally get, get to us. Does that work?
You, you mentioned you had, you know, some businesses and stuff like that. And he goes, I mean, I think it would be very, very helpful was when you went to, is you could actually mention who and what kind of, you know, stuff you have, what kind of funding you have. I mean, there's going to be, you know, expenses to go with this and, and, you know, just for mid, water for, for openers. I mean, you know, it's, are you gonna, you gonna pay for the water? You, you expect the village to pay for the water? I mean, those are questions that are going to be asked, so you might want to think about those as you, as you make your presentation.
Sure. So we have thought about that. And this is-
You know, this, this is not the time for this. Yeah, I would, I would go through Parks and Rec first.
Sure.
Because we can't really do anything about it since the niceness is not on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill. I like the idea. Anyone else? Next up is the Village President's Report. I just have a couple things. The first is a very happy thing. We were able to celebrate last night trustee Balleray, who was named this year's Person of the Year by the Lions Club, had a great turnout. Joe said it was the biggest turnout ever.
Ever.
In the history of, in, in history, basically, of anything. So it was a lot of fun. So that's a good thing. The sad thing is, you know, and I, I imagine most folks have already seen this, we, we lost Kay Snyder, Kathleen Snyder. She died September 4th at her, at her home in Naples. There's a beautiful article written in the Landmark about her that you can read online. And I thought that Mr. Up Hughes probably picked the best possible word to describe Kay, which was irrepressible. If any, anybody who knew Kay Snyder knew that she was a, a force of nature in her own right. She was an extremely important person in Riverside. She was the chair, the president of the Chamber of Commerce. She was a village trustee. She was the first woman Person of the Year back, back when they called it Man of the Year. And she founded Arcade Jewelers, which was a business here, celebrated its 40th anniversary last, last year. And her daughter, Robin Mooney, had a really nice quote in the Landmark article. She said, "She was not a typical mom. She taught me the art of putting passion and love for people before everything else." And that really kind of sums up Kay. I mean, she was, you know, you hear words like one of a kind, never be forgotten. They truly apply to Kay Snyder, and she truly will be missed. And she was a dear friend, and I miss her a lot. I'm sure everybody else does. A celebration of her life will be held on Friday, October the 6th, from 2:00 to 8:00 PM at Ivan's Maravichuk Funeral Home here in town. And a funeral, funeral mass will be celebrated on Saturday, October 7th, at 10:30 AM at St. Mary's, also here in Riverside. Rest in peace, Kay. And that's all I have. Ms. Francis?
There's a number of items to update residents about this evening. One being the 2017 street improvement program that was ready enough currently. Is watering sod in place. There will be an E flash that goes out to residents notifying property owners that have had sod recently put in. The, the process of maintaining that sod so that it stays for the following year. Currently, our contractor is watering it and will do so for the next two weeks. The first division sewer separation is 95% complete. There are some remaining items such as pavement patching, curb and gutter, and sidewalk installation, and also landscape restoration. Some residents will note that in Landmark last week, there was an article with regard to bones being discovered over in the first division. Today, we actually had two archaeologists from Army Corps of Engineers inspecting the site, and they have actually released the site. And so we can complete installation of that pipe over in the first division and essentially wrap up that project. We are targeting early October, but we believe that it may even be completed as soon as late September. So the next item is the train station roof replacement project. The replacement clay roof tiles have been received, copper gutters, and the boards are currently being installed. There are approximately 30 working days left for that project. We also have the train station platform brick repair and the ADA compliant handrail replacement. This project has been planned to immediately follow the roof replacement project. There is a current discussion underway regarding the design of the handrails, and I believe that Preservation will be discussing that in their meeting next week. Additionally, the MWRD intercepting sewer lining. Work is nearing completion on Forest Avenue, including the First Avenue and Forest Avenue intersection, and is expected to be completed in about a week permanently. They are targeting, they were hoping to be done by Saturday, but certain pavement markings may not be done until Monday because they had to move some mobilized staff to accommodate our touch of truck. And then we also have the car show this weekend. And also, we have the pavement rejuvenation project. Application of the pavement rejuvenator to extend pavement life is planned for October 4th with October 5th and 6th as rain dates. The rejuvenator will be applied to Burling and York Roads, East Quincy Street, and also the 300 and 400 block of Nuttall Road and the 100 and 200 block of North Della Plain. I, despite this not being a Riverside project, I also wanted to update residents regarding the resurfacing of Harlem Avenue. This is an IDOT project. For those that travel Harlem Avenue, that, that street has been milled. It is anticipated that resurfacing will begin for south of Ogden late next week, and then they will obviously proceed to north of Ogden, which would impact Riverside residents. Couple of quick reminders, the car show is this weekend on Sunday from 9:00 to 5:00. And we also have the Fire Department Open House on Sunday from 9:00 to 3:00 at Fire Station 2, which is located at 59 Pine Avenue. And I would like to recognize village staff, the village received the Center for Digital Government Award. We were recognized as a finalist for the Government Experience Award. And these are different classifications based on types of government. There is a state, county, and then city government, and so we are one of the finalists. And it's based on our website and different things that we've implemented over the past year to make the experience more user resident friendly. So that is all I have.
I can't let the comment about the finding of the bones go by. That's, I'm a geek and I like to, I just want, this is a brief history note. So this happened over, over on Blooming Bank, and they, they were digging a trench so that they could lay one of the last sewer pipes in when they uncovered, you know, the, the remains. But what was also interesting is when they were doing the dig, and our engineer was there and said that it had never been dug in that area before. It was all sand. And it's really interesting that all along Blooming Bank Road, running down in front of the train station, and then kind of angling north, northeast through town, is the shoreline of the ancient Lake Chicago. About 12,000 years ago during the Calumet phase, Lake Chicago actually came all the way out here to Riverside. So a lot of the homes that are on that stretch used to be beach. So when they dug up all the sand, that was, that was 12,000 year old sand from the shoreline of, of ancient Lake Chicago right here, right here in Riverside. So kind of a little side light of our history. And then Jill and I were out walking, and right near, she's like shaking, what a geek, right near where one of the staging areas for the sewer project, we found remnants of a beer bottle that we then went online and checked it out. It was from like the 1880s. It was just laying in the grass and it's been unearthed during the, the project. So we have a lot of history here, and as, as Mr. Up Hughes noted in his, in his editorial, we're, we're walking on a lot of history. So just a little aside. So any questions for me about ancient Lake Chicago? Moving on, next is the approval of the agenda. I have a number of items. Ratification of voucher list of bills for September 7th, 2017. Approval of voucher list of bills September 21st, 2017. Filing review of the following. Village Board of Trustees' Public Hearing and Regular Meeting Minutes of August 17. Board of Fire and Police Commissioner Meeting Minutes, June 27. LAC Meeting Minutes, August 8. Planning and Zoning Commission Public Hearing and Meeting Minutes, July 26. Community Development Department Monthly Report, August 2017. The Finance Department Monthly Report, August 2017. The Fire Department, Police Department Reports for August 17, August 2017. The Police Department Memo Regarding Police Chief Recertification. The Police Department Memo Regarding a Recent IDOT Grant. A Resolution Authorizing the Submitting of an Application for Surface Transportation Program Funding for the Forest Avenue and Berry Point Road Resurfacing Projects. A Resolution Authorizing the Submitting of an Application for STP Funding for a TCM Project for the Metro Station Pedestrian Access Improvements Project. A Resolution of the Village of Riverside Waiving Competitive Bidding and Authorizing the Village Manager to Purchase, to Issue a Purchase Order to Paul Conway Shields for Updates and Upgrades to the Village's Existing AMC's Rescue Systems in an Amount Not to Exceed $30,610. That's the Jaws of Life mechanism that we have. And a motion approving an agreement between the Village of Riverside and Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council Lodge Number 39, effective January 1, 2017 to December 31, 2021. Does anyone need anything removed for discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion in a second to approve. Motion by Ms. Peters.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gisa. Please call the roll.
Trustee Powell.
Aye.
Trustee Gisa.
Aye.
Trustee Lomston.
Aye.
Trustee Balleray.
Aye.
Trustee Settling.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up are reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons. Are there any liaison reports this evening? Hearing none, we have Chief, Chief White soul is here to review traffic enforcement and roadway safety improvements. Chief White soul.
Good evening, Mr. President, trustees, and manager. I wanted to upgrade, update the board on recent traffic improvements, including some of the structural improvements that were done. Actually, I get a lot of questions from residents as to how we're handling traffic concerns, complaints, and, and what was, what has actually been done. So when, when we're done here tonight, tomorrow, we'll post the memorandum on the website and we'll probably E flash it out. I've already shared it with our local newspaper. But I, I thought the board would be, should be given some of the facts on what's happened. And, and when we get to the roadway improvements, some, this was put together by myself, Director Bailey, who's not here, and our village engineer, that some of the structural changes that have been happening thus far this year. As far as the enforcement goes, you can, you can see where we are as of September for actual citations. So of the, one of, one misconception is those moving violations you'll see there, that, that, those are basically state tickets that we issue to motorists. Over 680 of those citations were issued within the Village of Riverside itself, not Harlem, Ogden, 26th, or First Avenue. And there's a good majority of those have been issued on details, especially in the school zones. And then we've issued a tremendous amount of parking tickets, at least from my perspective. And how does that play into the traffic enforcement? Well, the, the, the more we're enforcing the parking regulations, the better traffic flow we have, and the, the less obstruction there is for, for easy flow. Now, there are some residents that like to park their cars purposely out on the streets to slow traffic down, and that actually does work in some areas. But I always caution them when they call me about that because their cars can be rear ended very easily when they park them in front of to purposely slow down traffic in the area. But it is done, and, and some residents that constantly contact me that really like to do that, at once on Lionel Road, they call me and purposely tell me that they're going to put their cars out there in an attempt to kind of bottleneck the traffic. And I tell them it's legal if, as long as you're parking in front of your home and it's legally parked, just be careful that, you know, cars don't try to squeeze by and somebody is smashing your car just for, so you can have a perception of it being a little slower in traffic. So I'll have a full report on this stats at the end of the year, but I wanted you to see where, where we're at so far. And the, the roadway improvements, many of these roadway improvements that you see out here came out of the traffic study, and some of them were actually started before the traffic study even, you know, was adopted by the board. So we've made improvements, without going over every single one, there's been improvements in, in front of the District 96 schools, as you can see. We did crosswalk improvements. We did traffic light improvements, high visibility crosswalks. There's been high visibility crosswalks in the school areas, the downtown central business district. We've done curb cuts, which are, you know, more access to the street for either ADA compliant or just dropping off kids. There's been a redesign of some of the timing devices on the lights themselves, specifically Park Place and Woodside over there. Those, the timing devices are now, for the lights are tied into the timing device that's right in front of the school itself. There's been increased signage over there. There's been the thermal plastic roadway markings, which was a real push by Director Bailey, and I agreed with him. He, he wanted those years ago, and they have made a tremendous improvement. We've done significant improvements in front of the high school. So we worked with the high school when they got the new parking lot on the Brookfield side. There was a lot of congestion when the zoo employees let out, the school lets out, and during sporting events. So as you can see from the school, we've improved the ADA access to, we've improved designated lanes. Brookfield has made their side of golf no parking standing any time. I'm presently working with the Brookfield Deputy Chief to see if we could jointly do a grant for a lighted sign at the crosswalk that goes to the football stadium that would flash when students are crossing. They've increased the, the striping in front of the school also. So there's been a lot of direct improvements over at the high school based on their new parking lot. We put new signage on East Avenue, and we've done over 500 traffic details at the schools. And that's every single day at, usually at drop off and dismissal, unless there's some very large event going on in the town that would require all the officers to be there and the CSO. So if we had a major accident or something that we had to deploy all the personnel there, would be the only reason that the officers or the CSOs during drop off and dismissal were not in area schools. We have a rotation in the squad room on where they go every day, including St. Mary's. And it's very, very taxing at times. And for those people that don't think we provide a lot of service to all of our area schools for traffic, parking, and, you know, even crossing guards, they're wrong. We're at our schools every single school day in one fashion or another. And we're at District 208 every single day, just because of the volume that they have up there. And sometimes we share that intersection of Ridgewood and Golf with Brookfield on their side. But, you know, they'll be wrapping up the construction on First Avenue. If it wasn't wrapped up today, it's going to be very shortly. And so that should improve access to Ridgewood Road, and then Brookfield's going to be clearing up their construction farther down on Washington, so that should alleviate concerns. But, so there isn't a single day that there probably doesn't go by that officers are involved in some traffic detail of some type or another. So, and just to make an example of that, I brought in, just, I just wanted to read this. So here's an email I got this morning. I get an email every single day. This is from a resident that said, "Chief, Monday through Friday, I leave for work at 5:46 AM. Every single day, a silver Toyota blows the stop sign at Della Plain by the big ballpark. Could you please have your officer sit there?" So we sat there for two days in a row, and we ticketed the vehicle, and he wrote me back an email that said, "Truly amazing. Can't believe you caught him." So they, they, he must have been there when the officer made the traffic stop. So there, there isn't a, probably, there is not a week that I don't get a call or an email from some resident about parking concerns, traffic concerns, safety concerns, the crossing guards, or something like that. And I do want to say that it's not just me up here. It is absolutely Sonya, some of the improvements that they've made in the central business district, definitely Director Bailey, and definitely our engineer, who has, you know, really made some improvements that from my perspective is the crosswalks, timing, new lights and traffic lights that really increase pedestrian safety more than it does the traffic safety in some cases. So I'm going to post that tomorrow, but I would be happy to answer any questions the board may have on the memo.
Questions? Chief? I, I have one. You said something I thought was, you said of the 1,527 moving violations, 680 were within the village limits.
That's correct. Thus far.
And, and I'm sure you see it, there is, there's just a constant kind of barrage on social media about speeding, people blowing through stop signs, all within the village. Because even with the 680, still, a vast, not a mass, but a majority of the stops that are being made are not being made within the village. How do you, how do you determine how much, how many, what, what, how you allocate resources for patrols within the village? Because our residents, I mean, we hear, as you know, you hear it all the time too, people speeding and running through. So how do you decide where to put your officers?
Well, we've allocated the officers to the top. So by the end of the year, that 680 will be much higher than that. And, and a lot of the other tickets that you see on there are grouped into the grant. So a lot of the grants we get are state roadways. So there, there are state grant guidelines we have to meet. So unlike, unlike normally, I'm not allowed to put quotas on officers for tickets, with one exception, and that's when we get grant funding. So if you get grant funding, the grant says the officers have to do this amount of work per hour. So you'll see a little bit more heavy traffic enforcement or, or numbers on grant funded tickets. So the DUI grants that we always get are mostly Harlem, First, Ogden, although some of the, we do have arrests that take place in town, but that's where you see a majority. But on those types of arrests, officers can issue five, six tickets on a single arrest. So those numbers may be one traffic stop, but five citations. With just the, with those 680 I told you about, that's just a single traffic stop and this, a speeding, they blew the stop sign, they're on their cellphone in the school zone. So that's just one citation for, per traffic stop. So it can be a little misleading with the grants because officers could come in with 40 tickets in a grant period because they, they maybe got a suspended arrest or a drunk driver, and they issued three or four or five citations on that one traffic stop. So, and then we, we put that, the traffic, we're going to be putting them into the school districts now that they started. And then we have a roll call, there's a, if you come in our roll call room, there's a calendar up there for where we're working traffic enforcement.
I guess I'm not, I didn't ask the correct question clearly. I guess what I wonder, and I think what a lot of other residents wonder, is why isn't there more enforcement within our village to try to put a stop to the speeding and the rolling through signs?
Well, you know, I think we put as much as we honestly, I, so the, for the manpower that I have and the calls for service that are happening during the day, so if they're not on an assigned call, they're doing some traffic or parking enforcement almost every single day. And those tickets are the ones that happen in town. But these, these officers are having to balance between, as we don't have a traffic unit or a designated single traffic officer, they're having to balance between doing the traffic enforcement and then answering the residents' concerns, whether, you know, they're taking theft reports, burglar, handling auto crashes. So, you know, that, that's a juggling act. On some days, there's no traffic enforcement done except for in the drop off and pickoff because they're so busy for calls for service, they don't have any time to do proactive enforcement. So I, I think they actually do a lot of traffic enforcement within the village itself based on current manpower needs and, and, and calls for service. Right now, the department is just under 10,000 calls for police service, and it's September. So it is a balancing act when we're running, you know, minimums basically every day. I mean, that, that's not a complaint, it's just a component of the size of the department.
I have a comment on that, actually. So safety is a major concern for me in the village, and I see a lot of that stuff on social media as well. One of the things that the chief did for, for, for me, before I was on the board, was he reached out to me personally via email and recommended to, to, you know, when, when there is someone that's speeding, take it upon myself to email him the license plate of the person that was driving what I would consider recklessly. And- consider recklessly. And I have to tell you that on the 100 block of Fairbank, after doing that and sort of the group of people on the street taking that upon ourselves and sending those emails, the repeat offenders stopped almost, almost immediately. There were people that were driving down that street regularly, driving what I would say reckless, right? And after sending the chief these, these emails and these license plates, they stopped cutting through there. Or when they did drive down, they were driving more slowly. What, I don't know, if you wanna talk a little bit about what you did with that, but it had a huge impact on what we were doing. And I think that with, with the, with the smaller police force, being the eyes for the police is something that had a huge impact on what was a problem area to me personally. And I commend you for what you did on that because it worked.
So, what I did is we, we developed a letter that we would send. So, if we get a complaint of reckless driving and they're gone by the time we get there, it's a delayed report. And somebody gets a license plate, which happens quite often, we run the license plate. If it's a resident, we'll drive by the house, the officer will knock on the door and say, "You know, your car was reported driving recklessly." You know, we're just, we're just here to let you know that, you know, it's a warning, kids are in the area, it's a residential neighborhood. A lot of times, it's the kids driving the car and we tell the parents. And the parents say, "Okay, you know, I'll tell my son or daughter." Not all the time, there's adults. If it's out of town, if the license plate's listed out of town, I write them a letter and letterhead that says, "Hey, your car," we do this neighborhood program, "your car was spotted driving recklessly, exceeding the speed limit. It's a residential neighborhood where children play. This is just a warning. We'd appreciate it if you're a regular traveler through town that you pay attention to the 25 mile an hour speed limit, or in some cases, it's 20, depending on where they at." I mail it to the registered owner. Sometimes I get, I include my email and phone number, sometimes I get calls back, "Thank you." You know, "I didn't realize it." Sometimes I get calls back that, you know, I don't wanna hear from. But, but at least they acknowledge them. So, and, and it does, cause a lot of them are right, trustee is absolutely right. There are people that travel through town every day. They're either going, they're either cutting through town, to be honest, or they're going to the train, or they're going somewhere. So, they're, if somebody's driving down Burling Road or Berry Point, they're probably coming, doing that travel every day. So, that, that letter serves a purpose that, you know, we know that you're, you're doing it. And it has been pretty successful. And I have a huge file of all the ones we've written. So, because sometimes I get responses from the people we write that, you know, they say, "Thank you, my, my 16-year-old daughter was driving. I'll notify her not to do that again." So, everything I get back, I keep too.
Yeah, I think obviously you get a ton of them from me. I think that's the way that we can help, help chief and help the other officers in a pretty economical way. And I even had one of the guys who wrote the letter to stop by and apologize. So, I thought he was gonna do something other than apologize. So, I pretty happy with his action. But, again, I think that's what we have to really look for, is think out of the box on ways we can do that. Kind of a force multiplier type situation. Because, you know, the fact that people are calling you and saying they're purposely parking their vehicles out there to slow people down, it means we haven't got it solved yet. And we gotta work together somehow to figure that out, whether it's more resources, whether it's continued public works improvements, whether we gotta relook at physical barriers and any of those discussions that we had that we, we don't really like. But, something still, we're not hitting the mark completely. We get, you know, we get calls all the time and I'm emailing you all the time with pictures of those folks running through. So, I think it's a work in progress. I also think that it's very important that you come up here and remind people how much you are doing, because so much we look at the things that you're not doing, right? Because we still see the cars going fast. So, talking about how many people we've already pulled over, talking about the things that we've got done from the traffic study. I think it's important to give our law enforcement officers the credit that they deserve, even though we still got more to do. I think we need to make sure we remind them.
And then you bring it into context, maybe, you know, like the one I got, we'll, we'll put a detail out there, we'll answer their specific concerns, so they can do that. Plus, we have the speed trailer that they can sign up for. I think we had like 46 or 48 deployments. It's a good device and we put it out usually three to five days in a neighborhood with the speed thing. So, and it can also give us some data. So, I think it's a good tool. And that was something we got on a grant. So, I think that benefits the residents also.
And I've mentioned this before, Trustee Collins said something I thought was brilliant when she was serving. She said, "One of the best things we could do for traffic enforcement in town is for all the people who live here to drive the speed limit, to actually stop at stop signs. And let's, let's frustrate the speed demons who are trying to get through town." So, let's, let's set the example and maybe that'll, maybe that'll help as well. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Next up are ordinances and resolutions. And first up is a resolution supporting diversity and inclusion.
Yes.
Be out of order, the petitioner is here for that?
Of course. Item B is an ordinance approving a variation to allow a dumpster enclosure to be built between the existing building and the front corner sideline at 15 Riverside Road, First American Bank variation. Ms. Adams. Thank you, trustee.
Yes, so First American Bank submitted an application for a variance in order to build a dumpster enclosure between their building, so right up against the building and Riverside Road. So, a code requires that dumpsters be screened on four sides. And the existing dumpster at First American Bank is located on the south side of their building, between the building and the lot line along Riverside Road, right adjacent to that driveway that they have coming off of Riverside Road. And it's currently unscreened. So, they were sent notification that it needed to be screened. However, in order to keep it in that location, they do need a variance because our code states that you're not allowed to store your refuse containers between the front of the building and a front or corner side line. So, since that is frontage along a street, it's considered a front or corner side lot line. So, they can't build it without getting this variance. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing on the variance at their August meeting and did recommend approval. At the public hearing, the petitioner explained that the bank has kept that dumpster at that corner for years. However, they are being required to screen it. They proposed keeping it in the same location because if they moved it to the back of the building, they would have to come down some steps to take out the trash. They would probably have to lose some parking spaces in order to accommodate it. And it would be more visible to residents if actually if it were located in that area. The petitioner explained that they could not place it directly behind the building because of the drive-through and that it's a one-way traffic movement in that area and the garbage trucks can't make it through the, the drive-through canopy area. He also clarified that if they placed it at the far end of the property, closer to the alley, they would probably be losing about two parking spaces in order to accommodate the dumpster enclosure and that there would probably be some traffic movement issues or conflicts in that area as well. So, the commission discussed the variation. They asked if there was any other areas that might have a similar circumstance. The only one that staff could think of would be Jeff's auto since it is set so far back. They don't have a dumpster per se, but they do have totes that sometimes they leave out in front, but, but not always. The commission did ultimately discuss the uniqueness of this property and the amount of frontage that it has, the operation of the drive-through and determined that that was a unique situation. And kinda the confluence of all of it was not necessarily applicable to other properties in the B2 District. So, they also said they didn't feel it was gonna have a detrimental impact on the public welfare or other properties since the dumpster has been there for years and now it'll be screened. So, they recommended approval, unanimous vote of five to zero to approve the variation request. You have an ordinance before you that would grant the variation. The petitioner is here to answer any questions if you have any other additional questions about the location of the dumpster. And that is all I have. And you also have the findings that are required to make from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'd ask for a motion to approve an ordinance approving a variation to allow a dumpster enclosure to be built between the existing building and the front corner sideline at 15 Riverside Road, First American Bank.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Lumpston, seconded by Mr. Pollak. Any discussion, any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Collins.
Hi.
Trustee Jezza.
Aye.
Trustee Lumpston.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Settle.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Thank you, trustee Pollak for seconding that. Okay. Next up is a resolution supporting diversity and inclusion. As part of Riverside's efforts to realize and expand on the economic development recommendations of the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, the village has enacted many initiatives that accentuate its openness to new residents, business, visitors and businesses. Among the many things that the village has done over the past several years, we've had the renovation of the Burlington streetscape to create an attractive and vibrant business district. The village has also increased its support of existing and prospective businesses by streamlining the process for opening new businesses, enacting financial incentives, updating its sign ordinance, and establishing a facade improvement program. Village has also actively pursued marketing and branding efforts that embrace the village's history while carrying forward its legacy of innovation, conservation, design, and commitment to natural beauty. Integral to these efforts is Olmsted's foundational idea that beauty is a civic necessity and that the village's public spaces, residential districts, and business districts should be designed and used to encourage civic interaction and social discourse among residents and visitors. To further these civic goals, the village has increased maintenance and beautification of its natural areas, has encouraged increased use of its riverfront, established bike and walking routes, created a visitor's center, and erected an historical art installation at the train station. The village has allowed for bed and breakfast and vacation rentals and has increased the number and scope of its recreational and community events. All of these efforts share a common theme. They are intended to make visiting Riverside, living in Riverside, and doing business in Riverside more desirable, easier, and enjoyable. The attached resolution adds a broader context to these efforts by proclaiming the village's ongoing desire to encourage a diverse, inclusive, and neighborly community. The resolution makes clear that Riverside is a place where people with varying backgrounds, perspectives, ideas, and cultures can come together in a beautiful, safe, and harmonious environment that promotes mutual respect and understanding. The resolution reads as follows. Whereas one of Riverside's founding ideals is to create a beautiful environment that encourages civic interaction and social discourse among residents and visitors alike. And whereas the residents who live in the village of Riverside and the visitors who come to enjoy the village's history, architectural, and natural beauty, and to shop in its businesses and participate in its public events, have diverse backgrounds, perspectives, ideas, and cultures. And whereas creating an attractive place where people want to visit and live is essential to the village's overall betterment and vibrancy, including supporting its schools, sustaining its businesses, and enhancing its property values. And whereas people of varying backgrounds, perspectives, ideas, and cultures have made and will continue to make countless contributions to our village, state, and nation. And whereas one of America's greatest strengths is its commitment to embracing and protecting people's differences through a shared dedication to freedom, equality, and justice for all. And whereas the village of Riverside seeks to advance these principles and is committed to treating all people with respect and dignity. And whereas the village of Riverside has always been dedicated to creating a diverse, inclusive, and neighborly community where people with varying backgrounds, perspectives, ideas, and cultures can come together in a beautiful, safe, and harmonious environment that promotes mutual respect and understanding. Now therefore be it resolved that the village of Riverside celebrates and encourages diversity and a spirit of inclusion among its residents and visitors and will continue to advance the principles of freedom, equality, and justice for all. So, I would ask for a motion and a second approving a resolution supporting diversity and inclusion.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Peters.
Second.
Second by Mr. Baller. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Jezza.
Can I abstain from this?
You, well, under, under Illinois law, without a conflict, if any court were to construe an abstention, it would be counted with the majority. So, technically, no. But, you know, you, it's a free country and so you can say.
I abstain.
I don't think we have enough time for comments. Could you reopen it for comments? I understand this is an economic development initiative, that's billed as an economic development initiative?
Yes, it's part of the.
Did they go through EDC? Or did they opine or provide comments or give language or anything of that nature? Is there a reason why that process was skipped?
Well, I think it's, I think it's stretching it to say it's purely an economic development issue. I mean, it is part of our ongoing effort to, to reach out to the broader community. So, I don't know that I would, I would consider it strictly an economic.
Strictly. Okay, I'm just reading the first paragraph of it. Okay.
I'm inclined to abstain as well, primarily not because I don't believe in diversity or inclusion. I just don't think it's needed. And I think it's a waste of time, resources, and assets to write regulations like this that aren't actionable. And I've had a conversation about it. But again, I think our village is incredibly inclusive and we have to by law, by state, honor all diversification in business and employment. I'm just more concerned about how much money we've spent creating a resolution, having the attorneys look at it, staff type it up and all this, when we have more basic things like ambulances and fire, fire equipment that we could be spending that money on. So, I'm inclined to abstain from things like this that don't really get any rubber on the road that helps us solve problems in our village. That's why people, I think, want us here and want us to focus around again.
Well, no staff time was spent on this. This, this was drafted by me. And I think this, you know, I, under normal circumstances, I would say that the village should stick to kinda the mundane things of, as somebody said, making the trains run on time. But, I would like to think that we don't have any diversity issues in, in this town. However, we have had some unfortunate circumstances with graffiti at our schools, swastikas painted on people's houses that were coming here. We've had some discussions made here at this board when we were discussing, discussing picnicking and, and fishing early on about the, you know, not wanting others to come here. So, it seems to me that it's worthwhile. I mean, you know, my, my wife, Jill knows that I love her. So, you could say that it doesn't need to be said. But, sometimes it's good to say. And if we, if you, if what you say is that this is something that we all agree with and know is true, then I find it hard to believe that we wouldn't want to actually say to the broader world that Riverside is a place that honors diversity, that we want to be an inclusive community, that we welcome people to come here. I mean, I can't, I mean, I have spent, we all have spent so much time over the last, you know, four plus years, doing our best to break what I consider to be one of Riverside's hardest obstacles to overcome, which is this notion that somehow we don't want people to come here. I mean, that was the thing that, that we have suffered from, from for decades. This notion that we don't want, you know, and we've, we've kind of talked both ways. We want a vibrant business community, but we don't want people to come here. And, you know, we've worked awfully hard and to, to try to counteract that misimpression that we don't want people to come to our town. And we do want people to come to our town. And we honor the people who come to our town. So, it seems to me that every now and then, it's okay for a village board to, to raise its sights, to say something that is of philosophical and probably even spiritual import, to, to let the world know what we stand for, that we're proud of our values. And that's, that was the point of this. So, if you believe in these things, then I ask you to support saying so.
I have a comment on that, so too. Yeah. Because, because I do agree with, with what you're saying. I come from a multi-racial family. My wife's Hispanic, my kids are, you know, half Caucasian, half Hispanic. And, and one of the reasons that I wanted to join the board was because, because I didn't feel like Riverside was an incredibly inclusive community. People that I know, and this is very personal for me, obviously, people that I know in the community that I've known for decades would say things around me, would do things around me that offended me and would have offended my wife or my in-laws or my friends. And, and it's something that, that, that I'm troubled with being in Riverside because I, I agree with you. I mean, racial diversity to me, diversity in general to me, is, is something that I'm passionate because of my family. And I want Riverside to be more inclusive, you know, I want us to, as a community, come together to welcome others in. When I see things on social media talking about comparing us to people in Hinsdale versus Berwyn or Lyons, I'm disgusted by that frankly. When I'm in Hauser and I see someone make a comment about Chico's on the bathroom door, I'm disgusted by that. But these are people that live in this community that are saying these things. And that's, you know, one of the reasons that I abstain is because I want Riverside to be more inclusive, not just as a board, but as a community ourselves, to be clear on that.
I'm not following that one. So.
It's just, it's just.
No, but I understand the abstain, I mean, if you want all that, that's what this
is that I don't feel that, that all of our community is inclusive, and I think that some of the examples of that were what happened when the, 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 the diversity flag was flown, some of the things that were said on social media. I think that as a community, we have to challenge ourselves to be more, to be more accepting of those, of those topics and items.
That's really what this is intended to do.
I, no, I understand, I understand that, as, I, I, I understand that, I just think that we need to work as a community to be more open and more recognize that we're not as welcoming as we should be. This is, it's, again, it's very personal for me, so...
No, I understand that. I guess I'm just having trouble squaring the circle here, but, because I agree with everything you just said, as you know.
Yeah, yeah.
That I did. And that's one of the reasons I, I wanted to put this together, because I want, I want to send that message that, especially to the folks out there that, that are making the comments that you're talking about, that's not who Rivers, that's not who we are. And that's, that's the point of this, is to make it clear that, that that kind of behavior, those kinds of comments don't belong here. And so, you know, I would hope that we could make this statement to send that message.
Further comments?
So, so far I have an aye and two abstains. So, trustee Ballerin?
Aye.
Trustee Setteby?
I'm going to abstain as well.
Trustee Peters?
Aye.
Okay, so this motion passes because it doesn't require some, some ordinances require affirmative votes. An abstention is not an affirmative vote, it's sort of a non-vote, which, as I said, counts with the majority. There are three ayes, no nays. It doesn't require a majority of the elected officials to vote in the affirmative, therefore it's three, zero, three, and so it passes.
And I would gladly vote an aye. Okay, thank you.
I think that was clear from the record, so...
I understand. Okay.
Next up is an ordinance amending the village code of the village of Riverside, Illinois relative to awning canopy and certain gas station signs. Director Abbott.
Yes, as you may recall, we had a sign variance before us back in July, I believe, to allow canopy signage at the former Ga- Marathon Gas Station at Long Common and Harlem Avenue. Our code currently does not address canopy signs in the B1 district, therefore they're considered prohibited, which is why the variance was needed. All of our existing gas stations in the village do have signage on their fuel pump canopies and are therefore considered non-conforming. And although the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the variation, they also recommended that staff begin preparing a text amendment that would address canopy signs in the B1 district. So, we did. We presented it to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The text amendment adds a definition for canopy signs and awning signs, illuminated signs for certain canopy signs, canopy signs as a permitted sign type in the B1 district, and then also fuel price signage as exempt signage. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this at their last meeting and did recommend approval. Some of their, some of the points are that the canopy signs would be restricted to an area of one square foot per lineal foot of canopy frontage. Signage can only be placed on the fascia of the canopy, so it can't be on like the posts, and it cannot extend vertically or horizontally beyond the limits of the canopy, so it can't extend like above the top of the canopy or kind of go past the edge of it, has to be on the fascia. Only signage on canopies over service areas, such as those found at gas stations, be permitted to be illuminated, and would only be allowed when the sign faces a public street or faces or is exposed to view from a public street or railroad right-of-way. Therefore, the more pedestrian scale signage, like attached awnings and canopies that are mostly just over like doorways and stuff like that, would not be allowed to be illuminated, so they would just have non-illuminated signage. As staff reviewed the code related to gas stations, staff identified another type of signage that's not sufficiently addressed, which is fuel pricing and fuel pump signs. The existing ground signs for the gas stations currently exceed the maximum area for ground signs, which is 32 square feet, primarily because of the fuel pricing that's incorporated as part of their signs. They kind of do one sign and has, you know, the name of the gas station, the next to it, you know, diesel's this amount, regular's this amount. So they all end up going over that 32 square feet. So staff recommended adding informational matter appearing on gasoline pumps and fuel pr- fuel pricing signs as exempt signage. So this exemption would exclude fuel pricing in the sign area calculations for ground signs up to 20 square feet. It would also allow the actual signage that's on the fuel pumps themselves, where it says like regular, mid-grade, super-premium, synergy, or whatever their fancy term is for their V-powered gasoline, that kind of signage would be exempted within limits. So because the gas stations are kind of unique with respect to their sign requirements, staff believe that this was kind of a justified additional signage, provided there were certain limitations on it. So the commissioners discussed the proposed changes that were in there. They had some concerns about the definitions not matching up with the zoning code, and some concerns about illumination, but they asked that the village attorney review and clarify whether there are any sort of conflicts that might need to be addressed, but did recommend approval of it, subject to the attorney's clarification. So staff did go over their concerns about the code conflicts with the village attorney, and he recommended that separate definitions for awnings and canopies be added to the sign code, so that way we're not relying on the definition in the zoning code, which does not necessarily jive with the definitions in the sign code. So we've added those. We also noted, he also noted that the zoning code doesn't actually adequately address these larger structure and freestanding canopies, and that a future amendment to our zoning code should probably be considered to address those moving forward, so that's something we'll be working on in the future. The village attorney and staff both agree that there's no conflict with the illumination restrictions regarding the signage in question. There's an example of their kind of banning signage that a lot of the gas stations like to put on their canopies that's illuminated. That's not series lighting or neon tube lighting, so there's not really a conflict there that we would be able to issue permits for gas stations that wanted to do that. But also because not all gas station canopies are freestanding, some of them are actually attached to the building, the idea of limiting illuminated canopies to those that are freestanding was abandoned in favor of stating that illumination of canopy signs is only allowed on canopies over a service area, such as those found at gas stations. And then, again, it's only allowed where it's facing a public street or visible from a public street or railroad. The new definitions for canopies and awnings have been added to the ordinance and some of the other clarifications made to the text as requested by the commission. You have that before you. Additionally, in reviewing the illumination requirements with the village attorney, we determined that it is kind of ambiguous whether internally illuminated signs are permitted. And many of our signs on Harlem Avenue are internally illuminated, and staff believes that Harlem Avenue is an appropriate place versus our downtown to just kind of have your standard internally illuminated sign. So staff would like to recommend that we add an F under the illumination requirements that states that external or internal illumination of wall and ground signs shall be permitted in order to clarify that that type of signage is permitted. So that'd be something in addition to what you have on there, if you're amenable to that, that I would recommend that you add to this text amendment that is before you.
So at that, I'd ask for a motion to approve an ordinance amending the village code of the village of Riverside, Illinois, relative to awning canopy and certain gas station signs with the addition of the item that Director Abbott has mentioned. So moved. By Mr. Setteby?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pollak. Any questions or comments?
I have one question. Monument signs was somewhere in there? We were talking about the...
Oh, yeah, ground signs?
Yeah, the ground signs.
Mm-hmm.
How many gas stations do we have with a ground sign?
Um, questionable whether the one at Minuteman would be considered a ground sign, so, one, two, three.
Two, three. Has the one that we, that started this whole process, have they done any work to repair their ground sign?
Um, no, they have not. They just were, they were, they were just at their administrative hearing this evening, so...
And that is, that is on their property still, eh? The monument sign is on their property?
I, I won't, I won't approve any more sign ordinances until that place gets up to, gets up to stuff. I, I let, I, we shouldn't have let, I don't think we should have let it go last time, but that's...
You're talking to waiver.
Okay, thank you.
But would this, would this ordinance amendment make that waiver no longer needed?
Well, the very, this amendment, they, I think they've already, they already issued the permit for their canopy sign to change. For their ground sign, they are, I told them, I'm not issuing you a ground sign permit until you, A, give me something that meets the code, and B, have a plan to address the base where this monument sign will go, because it's falling apart. It has to be part and parcel. I'm not going to let you put in a sign on something that's falling apart. So you need to, to figure this out. And they keep saying that they're going to do it, but nothing has come in. We've issued citations, they had their hearing today, and obviously they haven't done anything, so they were found guilty, and hopefully the fines assessed will be motivation for them to get it done before they get more fines.
But this ordinance does anything to do with that? That's what I'm trying to make sure.
No, I mean, their future sign that they put in, this would possibly give them a little bit more signage than under our current code to do, so, but their current sign is non-conforming, so whatever they, with this change, they might be able to do something that's the same size as they have now versus something smaller, which is what they would have had to do under our current ordinance.
So every day that they continue to not have, continuing violation?
According to the code, they have 30 days, once we send them their determination notice, and then after that 30 days, if they don't come into compliance and they don't pay their fine, then yes, we can start issuing daily citations again.
And we're keeping track of that date?
Yes, we will.
Yes. I hope they heard that. Further comments? Please call the roll.
Trustee Pollak?
Aye.
Trustee Giese?
Aye.
Trustee Melson?
Aye.
Trustee Ballerin?
No.
Trustee Setteby?
Aye.
Trustee Peters?
Aye.
Motion carries. Looks like you can just stay up there, Director Abbott, because we're moving on to considerations, and next up is consideration of wayfinding signage and location recommendations from the, from the Economic Development Commission and Preservation Commission.
So the village of Riverside has budgeted for wayfinding signage for the downtown based on recommendations from our CBD/CMAT plan, which recommended both gateway and directional signage, including bike route signage, to help direct people into the downtown. The village hired our marketing consultant that's working on our branding and marketing to create wayfinding signage design that incorporates our branding. In the spring, the EDC reviewed design options that were presented by our consultant utilizing our new logo for the gateway and the wayfinding signage. The proposal included design for a gateway sign, directional sign, parking directional signs, and parking lot signs. The commission chose the option that has the leaf and branch details. They felt that the detail reflects the signage that was installed on Burlington as part of the Streetscape project, as well as the pillars that we have over at First and Forest. They felt that the signage design was simple, but not so generic that it looked like it could be in any other community. So they thought it kind of best reflected the village. The commission also discussed the proposed monument sign for First and Forest that was the winner of the Floss competition a few years ago. So our marketing consultant also came up with a sign that would go on that proposed monument. As part of that discussion, the EDC determined that the monument sign did not really reflect Riverside, and they chose not to move forward with an actual monument sign, but rather just use the pole gateway signs at the intersection. The commission discussed that the intersection could still use something, perhaps some landscaping or some other type of hardscaping to enhance the look of the corner and create some sort of sense of place reflective of Riverside and Olmsted's vision at that corner. Once they had selected design, we identified areas where the different types of signage would be located, and the EDC reviews those, reviewed those proposed locations. It was kind of a moving target there for a little while, but ultimately recommended approval of the locations and the design at their meeting on September 14th. They also added the intersection of 31st and First Avenue as one where a gateway pole sign should go as well. The Preservation Commission was also asked to give their recommendation, since this would be going in our parkways. They recommended approval unanimously for this. They recommended approval of the design. They also concurred with the EDC's recommendation to not move forward with a gateway monument. The commission agreed that additional landscaping and possibly some hardscaping near the existing monuments to establish a sense of place would be appropriate. They also recommended adding streetlights, possibly with banner poles along Forest Avenue leading from First Avenue towards the bridge. They also reviewed the, I forgot to mention, there's also a business directory sign. They reviewed the business directory sign, and they only recommended it for the green parking lot. At this time, they requested additional review of any business directory that would be placed by the train station or village hall as their local landmarks, and the proposed scale, they felt might not be appropriate depending on the location. So, with all that being said, we'll kind of go over the signs and the locations there. So, here's our pretty picture portion of the presentation. So, here we have a mock-up of the gateway pole sign. So this would be placed, you can see here, it would be on a black pole, and this is that leaf design that I was talking about before. So this would be made out of metal, attached to the pole, and then attached to the bottom of the sign. So this gateway pole sign would be located, proposed at First and Forest Avenue. There would be two of them, one for the northbound traffic, one for the southbound traffic. One would be at Displanes and 26th Street, Berry Point and Fairbank, Harlem Avenue near East Burlington Street, and Harlem Avenue and Long, Harlem Avenue and Long Common. And, budget permitting, they would like to have one at First and Forest. No, not First and Forest, sorry, 31st and First. The next type of sign would be directional signs, and so these are more our wayfinding type signage. And, let's see, that's our big one here. So now, these are two scales, so this is like the size of the sign and the size of the lettering that would be used out there. So, these signs would be placed out at Woodside and Maplewood, further north, so by Aitkinside, Delaplane, Kimbark and Forest, Forest and Long Common, in Centennial Plaza, East Burlington near the green parking lot, at Riverside Road and East Quincy, Burling and Riverside, Riverside and Lawton, Long Common and Evelyn, Kent area, East Quincy and Harlem, possibly if there's room and if the budget allows, and if I doubt we'll approve it and budget allows, Joliet and Ogden, since it's not technically in the village, might not be able to get that one in, but we'll give it a try. So this would be this type of directional sign, and the point of this is, once you get into town, to try to direct you towards the downtown and the things that you want to see. The ones that are further from the downtown would just have like basic information, downtown, metro station, and possibly a bike route designation, if appropriate, in those, those areas. So, like for instance, on Long Common, after you come in from Harlem Avenue, at a certain point, you're wondering if you're ever going to get there, this would let you know you're getting close. So then we have the parking directional signs. These ones would also be located, there'd be fewer of these, to try to direct people to the different areas where we have the parking. So whether it be our daily fee metered park, metered parking, the commuter lots, or our public parking lots, or village employee lots. So this would be the sign for that. We're thinking that those would go like by Kimbark and Forest, Forest and East, along Common and East Burlington, at Riverside Road and Blooming Bank by the train stations, people know the term, to get to the commuter lot, parking lot one. Also at Burling and Riverside, and at Berry Point and Blooming Bank, so anybody coming up Berry Point would know to go towards the commuter parking and the daily fee parking in that area. And then we have, last but not least, the parking lot signs. Sorry, I had to go to the side there. So, and for these, this is a cut, so it wouldn't be square, this would rise above the main body of the sign. Same for the parking sign. So these would be placed at our parking lots, parking lot one, which is our commuter parking lot, parking lots six, seven, those are the ones along Burlington and the green parking lot. Also for the commuter parking lot along Quincy, and the parking lot by Metalmites, and then the parking lots for the municipal parking lots. So the municipal parking lots would just say, you know, employee parking only. The public parking lots would say, you know, what the hours allowed for parking are, and the commuter lots would identify them as the daily metered. the commuter lots would identify them as the daily metered, and would have on there, you know, no overnight parking except by permit, that kind of information on there. And then I believe you have a picture, I didn't have a mockup made of it, because it's rather large, for the business directory sign, which also kind of has this sort of shape on the top with the logo, and then would have the map of the downtown on there with the businesses. So, that is our wayfinding signage program that the EDC and the Preservation Commission have recommended.
What's our, what's our liquor license, what's our restaurants able to be open to?
Is it midnight?
Well, whatever it is, it needs to coordinate with it.
Well, obviously. This was just a, a mockup, it's not the actual. Kind of in this language.
The, the directory app, I assume that the, that the actual directory is something that's gonna be able to be removed and replaced, right?
Right, so, they've said that there's a few different ways that it could be handled, so there's, you know, they're kind of like maybe looked at as individual panels, so that that directory part could be removed, like on an annual basis, and replayed, replaced as businesses change.
And on page two thirteen of our agenda, the, the bike route map? What is that showing you? What, what are the little bicycles telling you?
Oh, sorry, so that, that, just so you knew where the different routes were, so there's certain, I think you can see in my memo.
Yeah, I see where you're on the directional signage, where you're gonna say Palmer Route, this way, but then, but then along the route, we're also gonna come up with some kind of design, just to let people know how to stay on that particular route.
Well, right, we'll continue to have the smaller green signs at those midpoints, but at those major intersections where you kind of need to make a choice, and in talking with Michael Worthman, he felt that that was an important, those were the important locations to, to identify the route, so people know which direction to go. So like as you come to Berry Point and Blooming Bank, and as you come up to Riverside Road, that, you know, Olmsted Route, you go this way, or Palmer Route, or whichever, you go, you go that way. So those are the important ones to really call out, but then we can still keep our smaller ones along the route that let you know that you're still.
And we don't have designs for that yet?
No, we don't have.
Right now, we still just have those little green arrows. Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Paul.
Just, I, I think the signs look great, and I may just see them get installed. My only question is, at First and Forest, it looks like there's a sign on the west side of the street for southbound traffic, is that correct? And then one on the east side for northbound traffic. Is, where exactly is one on the east side located? My concern may be that if it's too close to those pillars, those monuments we have there, by a local club?
No, I was definitely thinking of trying to put it a little bit further south of those pillars, so it's before you get to the, before you get to the intersection.
And the one on, what about the one on the west side? Do we need IDOT approval for that?
Um, yes, we'll need IDOT approval for that, so I have a copy of their application, and once we have our final details and a plan, we can send them in to them for approval. They've got certain requirements, it has to be a breakaway pole, so, you know, it's for the, we can then decide whether we want to do the breakaway poles for all of them, or just for the ones that are in IDOT right away, which would be on Harlem Avenue.
Because, because on that one, we ought to also wait until we see if we are successful with our Salt Creek connector, because if we're successful with that, that would be something we'd obviously want to have on, on that sign, for a direction coming down towards.
Well, on First Avenue, we were just proposing the, the gateway sign.
Oh, just that one?
So it's just, it just says this, it doesn't have any specific directional signs.
Can you talk to the material of the sign? Lifecycle expectancy?
Um, I know they're, forgetting what they said, I want to say it was seven or ten years, there's some sort of UV coating that they put on the sign to help with fading and things like that, so.
There's enough contrast for this waiver, all that gets done?
I have a couple of questions or comments. Number one, they look great in person, but different from what we were looking at for months and months at the EDC level, the, and maybe it's because I don't have my contacts in today, but it is harder to me to read, especially that sign, and, but even the parking sign was a little bit harder to read it than I thought it would be. So, I don't know if that's throwing a wrench in, in their design, but one of the things that we need to make sure is that these are actually readable, so if that is the actual size.
So, yes.
I don't know if someone driving down First Avenue at thirty miles, forty miles an hour is going to be able to read that, that's my concern. And maybe, again, maybe it's just, I have bad eyesight, but it's, it's hard for me to really see what, you know, National Historic Landmark says there.
That's a really good point. And nobody, and nobody's gonna see established eighteen sixty-nine.
No one's gonna see that, yeah.
There are, what is the manual of uniform traffic, design, whatever, specific standards, that if the speed limit is a certain amount, the font size should be a certain size to be readable, so I would just ask staff to verify that we're meeting those standards.
Yeah, it seems to have some conflicting standards on it, so, imagine that. But, so there's a little bit of ambiguity on what size is actually required, so, but I have been talking with our marketing company about the, the actual font height, so that we can meet those IDOT requirements.
I think, to your point, we're gonna invest in signs, and it seems like a lot, by the way. My first initial reaction is, there's a lot of dots on that map. We've had comments when we're talking about slow traffic signs, that we have too many signs in town, and all, though these are better looking than those, but, but we gotta make sure that if we are gonna invest in them, that you can actually read them, so I totally agree with you on that, and so, some sort of a study should be, whether we just mock them up and drive by them, that's a pretty easy way to do it.
Yeah, and they, they said they could definitely, definitely do that, put it on a pole, and see how it, see how it looks.
The other thing I wanted to just bring up is that, I kind of noticed it this afternoon, and I sent an email about it, but the, the part, so, some of the parking lot signs, like for instance, parking lot nine, currently under your, I guess, the write-up as it currently stands, says employee parking only, and my concern is, and I, I think you said that's part of the code, right, so, parking lot nine, so employee parking only, that's just part of the code, well, that's fine, but right now, there's signs in front of every space that say only eight to five. I park there all the time, I don't know if I'm gonna get jumped at, but I park there all the time when I take my daughter to the library or whatnot, after hours. So, I have, I, it kind of raises the bigger question of, we need to make sure when we put these signs out, that they're not conflicting with other signs that are currently out there, that, I'm assuming those signs are gonna stay there, and the library has any, you know, intention of removing them, I don't know, but that sort of kind of mentality, every time we put out a sign, we need to make sure that it's gonna not conflict with what, with other signs that are out there?
Yes.
So.
Can I ask again, the decision to move Gateway Sign to Displayings and Twenty Sixth, it seems like a more desirable spot would be Displayings and Thirty First and Thirty First and First Avenue, because it looks like the only way you see the Displayings in Twenty Sixth is when you're exiting town, all right? So we'd have to put it on that south-east corner?
Well, there's the median, just a little bit south of there.
Oh, the median, okay.
You can put it in, you can put it in median. Which is kind of what I was envisioning.
Go ahead.
But I had originally proposed Thirty First and Displayings, and as the EDC was discussing it, they thought that the entrance was really more at Thirty First and First Avenue, and the entrance, and the traffic counts that were coming from our traffic study is coming from Displayings already at Thirty First, you have a number of cars already coming down, so maybe the sign should go at, at Twenty Sixth and Displayings versus not getting one until you got to Thirty First Street. So that was kind of the thinking behind that particular location change. And then you have the one just south of there, that would be right there at Woodside and Maplewood and Dela Plain, that would be a directional sign versus a Gateway Sign.
Just to kind of reiterate what Trustee Peters was saying, this, this strikes me as the kind of thing where it would be really easy to make mistakes on these signs. So, we need to be super careful. I mean, to her point, if, if, you know, if it's only employee parking for a certain amount of time, then the sign needs to say that. So.
Right. I was writing it to match the code, so if we wanted to say something different, I'm, I'm fine with saying employee parking only from eight to five, but we should probably follow up with a code change.
Well, we just, to, to the trustee's point, we just need to make sure that it conports with what, with what the actuality is. So I would suggest that instead of just relying on code, that we actually go out there and look, and see what each specific situation actually looks like, to make sure that the signs that we're getting ready to put up don't be, don't create a conflict, and, and also, let's make sure we can read, I think that's probably pretty important as well. And, and then all the little arrows, you know, I, I can just, I, there's no way I can look at this and, and imagine it, you know, so somebody needs to make sure
Oh, yeah.
that these things are, and I know you'll do your best, but let's, let's not misdirect people with our directional signs.
Indeed.
So, any other comments or questions? So I'd like to, I need a motion a second to concur with the EDC and Preservation Commission's recommendation on the wayfinding sign design and location, so that staff can begin creating a construction document for manufact, manufacturing the signs in full details.
It's a consideration, right? It's not a, this asks for a motion, yes.
Do we need a motion for this?
Well, it would be to give direction to proceed, right? So the, so yeah, motion's appropriate.
But there was, do we have, what, what is the budget for this?
Thirty? Oh, we got several budgets, so I think we have somewhere around sixty-five to seventy-five thousand dollars, I think, between gateways, wayfinding, and parking lot signs.
So this, this meets the budget requirement?
We're trying, yep.
Is that net of any grants, or is that the, that's the village cost for the signing?
That's the village cost, yeah. So, for the poles, the signs, the install, that's where we budgeted. There's one shared budget item, and that is, I think, some of the wayfinding signage, or maybe it was the Gateway signage, was combined with the Fourth Avenue Bridge lighting project, so that, that budget covers both the lighting and some of the signage. And then there's a specific line item for the parking lots, and a specific line item, either for wayfinding or the gateways, I forget which way.
Do you want to see that detailed book?
I think, I would like to see that detail, because if that's the case, I had in my mind it was not that much, we may want to revisit the number of signage, and.
You're not approving the expenditure?
Well, that's why I'm confused with what they.
Approving, you're giving us directions so that we can initiate.
You could prepare the documents, so that this could be, this will have to come back before you.
That's fine, well, we're just trying to get further direction on too.
Does, does the cost include installation too?
Um, the budget was to include installation, I don't have a cost for installation specifically yet, but I did get a cost for the manufacturing, and we were coming within budget numbers for there to be, to be room for the installation. So, kind of depending on, on how this all shakes out, we may have to pull some signs out versus others. We might not be able to put in all the Gateway Pole Signs that we want to, and then we talked about prioritizing which ones we wanted in, so. But it's in the budget, and, you know, I need to create these documents in order to be able to start getting quotes for pricing.
Well, I, I think it's fine to go ahead and, and create the documents to, to get bids or whatever, but I, I really would like to see some mockups before we, and even if it costs us a little money upfront, even if we have to fabricate one of each of these signs in its real form, it might be worth it, and then put them up on a temporary poll that all the quirks can devise, and put them up there for a few days, make sure they're legible. We do this all the time, they laser print them onto a piece of plastic cardboard, and stick them up there and look at different sizes, so you get them right, and that's, that's a good, a good small minor investment to get it right.
I think it's a really good idea, because we're doing a lot.
Right, and Pointy said they'd be, they'd be happy to, once we finalize things, actually do like an actual mockup for us to, to put up, if we wanted one for each sign, or if there were specific ones we really were, were struggling with the size on, they'd be happy to do that. So, and I think that's what they were, you know, just something on a, a plastic.
So do you want to see that before we give further direction to staff, or?
Well, I, I'm not sure what, you're just looking to be able to prepare requests for bids?
Right, that, that's correct.
Right, I mean, what?
I, I think you'd go ahead.
The motion is really more to give direction, but it's to concur with the, with the recommendation on the basic design, and that, so that staff can begin the, the document process. You've also given extra direction, which, to do these mockups that could be posted, and so when, when that's brought back, that would be part of it.
Got it. Okay.
Are we good spending sixty-five K on this?
I don't think we're there yet.
Yeah, you're not, you're not there yet, to just understand.
I understand, that we're getting ready to do documents that are gonna drive a company to prepare a document for sixty-five thousand dollars worth of signage, are we?
What's a request for bids?
It's in the budget, I mean.
I don't, I don't care that it's in the budget, I really don't, I think that's something we do need to take another look at. But I think we prepare the documents and get the bids, we can't do anything until we have the bids.
And we don't have any final numbers till we, yeah, till we have those bids, so.
Okay, so, motion a second. Did we get that, Al?
I think you got that.
Did we get that? It's been, it seems like a long time.
I do not have a.
Yeah, I don't have a.
I'll make a motion to proceed. Second.
Second, Mr. Jeeza, call the roll, please.
Trustee Powell.
Aye.
Trustee Jeeza.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsen.
Aye.
Trustee Valerie.
Aye.
Trustee Settle.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Director App.
Thank you.
Next up is a continued discussion of the public parks restrictions. Are you gonna handle this one?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
On June fifteenth, twenty seventeen, the Village Board discussed the various restrictions and directed the Economic Development Commission and the Parks and Recreation Board to discuss parkway restrictions and make a recommendation to the Village Board. On July thirteenth, twenty seventeen, the EDC discussed fishing, boating, and picnicking. At that meeting, the Economic Development Commission supported the changes, however, they had the following concerns. Has the Village designated what is a park, and should the amendment reference specific parks? Where does a park end and the parkway begin? How will increased garbage be handled? Should additional garbage cans be installed at parks? And should picnic tables be added to, to parks? It is important to note that the EDC stated these changes would build the connection to the riverfront, as was recommended in the CMAP Plan. They recommended that a boat launch be placed in close proximity to the Central Business District. On July seventeenth, twenty seventeen, the Parks and Recreation Board discussed the changes and made the following recommendations. Launch locations will need to be designated, additional signage by the riverfront to educate the public on fishing, issue fishing passes for those under sixteen to promote and educate children on fishing, those that are over the age of sixteen are required to have a state fishing license for picnicking, the following, a permit should be required for groups larger than six and must apply seventy-two hours prior to the picnic, deposit required for those obtaining these permits, the following items would not be allowed, grills, fire pits, volleyball nets, or any other temporary structures. Based on the feedback received from EDC and the Parks and Recreation Board, they are supportive of the changes to the park restrictions, however, they are concerned about the following, increase in trash and littering in designated areas, differentiating between parkway and park, ensuring the Village educates those that utilize the river and riverfront in installing tables and/or benches. Both Director App and Director Malteoti provided memos summarizing their meetings, and they are both in attendance this evening to answer any additional questions with regard to comments by both the Parks and Rec Board and the Economic Development Commission.
So, why don't we just run through the, the concerns that the two commissions had? Let's go to page two fourteen of the agenda. I'm not, I'm not really, and maybe Ron, this is a question for you, if, given the idea that, that picnicking with anything more than six people would go to the scout cabin, so, we're only talking about groups of six or smaller, why would we need to differentiate or reference specific parks? I mean, would we, I mean, somebody want, if, you know, if a family of four wanted to go out and have a picnic in, in a triangle, would, I mean, we, there's nothing wrong with that, right?
Well, I think that was part of the feedback that myself and Parks and Rec Board had received, that people were worried about.
that people were worried about where they, if they were going to be out in front of their house, picnicking, things of that nature. So the idea that they came up with is the, the parks are already equipped for that, at least seasonally, because they have restrooms there, they have trashcans there. So they, the idea was if we designated those as locations to picnic, then a lot of the concerns would be kind of wrapped up within those locations.
But the, but the specified parks that are, that are under your jurisdiction, or that doesn't include Scotswood Commons?
Correct.
So would we not want people to go and have a picnic in Scotswood Commons? And this is, these are just rhetorical questions for the board here.
I think that's, that's the thought process, that the picnicking of groups of six and below would be, would be handled at the parks, because the designated parks within the recreation, because those are the parks that are, they have garbage cans. I mean, just, that's, that's the simple point. They're, they're parks, they have garbage cans, and they're, they're equipped to handle, you know, a couple of people sitting down and, and, you know, throwing their trash away. So I think the, the goal was to keep it within the parks. Over six, I think it was more of an administrative thing where Ron would, would, would issue a permit with a majority of that being really driven to the scout cabin, because the scout cabin has its facilities, has the washing facilities, has, has proper garbage facilities. And we also, we're going to, we're going to take a deposit for anyone over six. And I think one of the really good ideas that I think it was Elizabeth Connaught that came up with was we were going to have an institute of leave no trace policy. So if, you know, if you have a group of people and, you know, you leave a mess and there's a trace, your deposit is, is, is gone. And we would collect deposits from everybody that comes for a permit, whoever they are.
So what, what parks currently right now have restrooms? Either portable, like we have over Harrington Park.
They're seasonal, it's only April through October, so that might have to be one of the conditions of the kind of permit process as well. But Big Ball Park, Patriots Park, Turtle Park, Harrington, Indian Gardens all have portable restrooms and trash. They all have trash.
Harrington has an actual bathroom, yeah?
They do, but you need access to it. It's, the facility isn't open. And that was the other designation with the number that, again, the scout cabin is equipped to, if you wanted to put up a volleyball net, if you wanted to have a grill or an open fire, we have that there. So the event itself would kind of, the criteria of the event would dictate where it would go. And the number being six, that's, that's open for discussion, it's an arbitrary number. But whatever that number is, is what triggers the permit process, which allows me to administrate and educate whoever's applying for that permit, what's allowed, what's not, what parameters the board decides.
Originally, our goal was to drive everybody to the scout cabin. I mean, that's anybody over six that wants a permit to picnic, that's, that's the place to go, because that has to be. I mean, if you're going to picnic, generally, you're going to cook something. But we, you know, through kind of discussion, you know, you have D ninety-six has, they have an end of the year party, and they like to use Big Ball Park. Somebody else may have an end of the, one of the other schools does it at Turtle Park. So that's why we left that option for groups over six to be more of, you know, Ron would make the decision.
We can manage that.
Yeah.
We have thirty people over there, then you're going to say, hey, we need to put two porta-johns over there, and a handicap porta-john, and you need to clean it up when you're done, and you can control that. There could be a deposit, so we have some teeth in that.
Is Guthrie one of your designated parks? So, see, that's what I'm confused about. So you have Guthrie Park or Scotswood Commons. You know, a family of four want to go out, throw down a blanket, and have a sandwich. I don't know why we wouldn't allow that. I mean, they're, they're large spaces. I mean, I can understa, you know, I can see, I mean, I don't see anything wrong with people having a picnic in a triangle. But if, you know, if we want to have some kind of, you know, limitations on it, I would think we'd want to include the really big areas like the Scotswood and Guthrie. Centennial, Centennial Plaza, near right by the water tower, it seems like that would be a natural place for somebody to sit down and have a sandwich. Somebody else think about the.
I've received overwhelming comments not wanting us to vote for picnicking anywhere except at scout cabin from everybody. I've not received anybody that says, hey, I think it'd be great to have a picnic area in the Scotswood. I've seen everybody that's contacted me has been avidly against it.
Scott, are you talking about people that are, that are bringing in a party? Or are you talking about people that are just?
Just picnicking, fishing, and boating, I've received.
Like two or three, like you and your wife and your two kids sitting down and having a sandwich?
I don't think it was really clarified that way.
Okay, but I, that, that.
The comments coming back to me have been, we don't want to change the ordinance on any of the three.
And why?
So, well, the reason is they want to leave it the way it is. They think it's a passive, passive community, and we want to be able to stroll and walk through the parks. So on the fishing side, they, they think that it's going to increase trash. And on the boating side, the same thing was the trash. The picnicking, the biggest one was restrooms and trash. So I just, just sharing that for whatever it's worth, that's, that's the impact I'm getting back from the people that communicate to me, is they're asking me, in this case, to vote nay, to change anything. So I think we need to be very clear on what the parameters are going to be about picnicking in triangles and things like that. Because I think, I don't see there's overwhelming support, other than us talking about it. You know, obviously, everybody knows that I'd love to, we kayak on the river all the time, and I think it's a great experience, and we'd like to share that with other people. But the feedback I'm getting is, is they would rather not see a whole bunch of that.
And everybody, everybody.
So.
Self-selecting group.
People that don't need to communicate with us on the board and help us understand this, right? This is a big decision for us to make. Like I said, we love the river, and we think it's great. All for kayaking and fishing in the village. The picnicking one, I'm a little, little concerned about the restrooms. I think I could see that being a problem, even with six people. But I think there's ways that we can manage that, not really. And I think you're the right entity to do that, right? So.
So let's, let's dig into the.
My, my thinking, and I'm going back and forth here, the six number, like you said, is arbitrary. My first thought was, if we're just talking about restricting this to parks that are controlled by Parks and Rec, so they've got waste baskets, they've got a rest, a porta potty. Six is too small. I mean, that should be ten, twelve, fourteen, whatever the number is for there. But then, if we're going to open it up even more to triangles, then maybe six is too many. So I'm, I'm all for expanding picnicking. But I think we have to designate where, and then maybe we expand it further later. But, but I think that there might be multiple standards depending on what park we're talking about. And I don't want to overcomplicate this, but, but six people in the triangle at the end of my block is too many. Six people in Harrington Park.
Well, we could say, we could say, you could say, you know, groups of six and fewer in parks and common areas and not allow the triangles. If that's, if that's the concern. I mean, that would be one option, I suppose.
I don't, I don't think people are going to be happy with allowing picnicking in the common areas, like Scotswood Commons. I mean, that's, that's, that's a residential, that's a residential block. There's plenty of places to sit a blanket down.
What about Guthrie?
Yeah, great, Guthrie Park, I have no problem with that. I have no problem with Swan Pond, I have no problem with Harrington Park, I have no problem with Big Ball Park, I have no problem.
So you just want to limit it to parks?
Yeah, we just limit it to parks, and you could throw Guthrie Park into that, to that mix. Because that's really, I mean, I, I think, and the six or more at the scout cabin, and this, what we were trying to do at the rec this is really nothing more than what we do now. Except we're, you know, because we, we rent the scout cabin out quite a bit for, for large groups, and they, they have birthday parties, they have family reunions, they have all kinds of stuff, and they grill, they do kind of stuff. So it's nothing more than we already do. And actually, I think we got a little tighter by demanding a, a deposit, no matter, you know, who your group is. You know, usually, we only, I think you only got a deposit when you use scout cabin. We didn't do it, we had a school group at Big Ball Park. But we found out that, you know, you need to have a deposit for that, too, because the leave, don't leave the trace doesn't always work. Because there was a lot of traces.
I really like the deposit and leave no trace. I think that should definitely. But that, that could be, Lance, that could just be part of a policy. But then, right, that would not be, need to be.
No, you don't need to have that codified.
So in the ordinance then, on page two sixteen of the draft, under the picnic paragraph, obviously, it would say more than six. So is there a definition anywhere of public park and that you know of in the code? I know there's a list of designated parks that are under your jurisdiction.
Right. I don't know if there's a definition, I'd have to look.
Because I wonder if we just said, in any public park would be sufficient, at strike or parkway?
Or any public park that's under the control of Park and Recs?
Well, see, Guthrie isn't, Centennial isn't.
Couldn't you just list out the parks?
We could just list.
I mean, that's the easiest way to do it, right? Identify them specifically.
So, yeah, why don't we just do a parenthetical after public park and list the parks? Okay. I don't really understand the next question about where does a park end and a parkway begin? Can anybody explain what they were getting at with that? Director.
So I guess the idea behind that, I think, kind of merged with some like the Scotswood Commons and things like that. But I think that idea is, is you have your parkway, which is part of your right-of-way, versus the park. And is that going to cause a problem? What if somebody is, you know, two steps too close to the sidewalk, or, you know? What is, what is the line? When are you in the parkway versus in the park? Are you too close to the street, or, you know, something along those lines? So I think that was just more the concern about when the two kind of merge into one, you know, are we going to be ticketing somebody because they're too close to the street or something?
But if we specify the parks, that issue goes away, right?
That would seem to eliminate it, yeah.
Okay, so that one's taken here. I don't know, I'm, I'm not sure we would have to have additional garbage cans if we're going to limit it to the designated parks, and we're limiting the number of six and fewer, and we're going to have a leave no trace policy.
Because the garbage cans are already there.
The garbage cans are already there. I don't think we want, other than scout cabin, we're, we're going to have some tables in scout cabin. I don't think we want picnic tables in any other parks, do you?
You may want to include, what about music? Is that something that's going to?
The noise organs is covered.
Oh, it is.
It's covered out of the noise organs, okay.
Because that takes care of EDC. The launch, launch locations, you know, we're, we're going to need to do, in terms of the launching part, I mean, there are kind of a couple of obvious kind of places that I think, and then this is something Parks and Rec can look at. There's, another thing down the line we might want to consider is some kind of canoe or kayak, kayak dock. You know, it's like, say, down at the bottom of the hill, bottom of the library. But that's going to need further research, because I don't, I'm not quite sure what kind of bureaucracy we'd get into when start trying to put something in the river, since it's an admissible waterway. So that's just something for future consideration. Had signage to buy the riverfront, riverfront to educate the public on fishing, what was that about?
So the idea behind that was twofold, education and help with enforcement. Because if we had the, if we issued the fishing passes for kids, again, there was a level of education, there's a level of enforcement with that, at least they're coming to us first, so we have an idea how many people are fishing. So the signage would just address similar things. It would have any rules we wanted on there, could also talk about the type of fish in there, safety rules, anything we wanted on there. But it would be kind of twofold, education and enforcement.
I think another thing that, you know, I think very many people know is, I mean, even though a child can fish without a fishing license, he is supposed to be accompanied by an adult with a license. Just, I mean, that's according to, not our laws, that's, that's.
Right. So things like that, or directing them to obtain a fishing pass at Parks and Rec office, just things of that nature could be included.
So what, what actually constitutes the riverfront that we control versus the river that Department of Natural Resources or someone else controls? High watermark.
I think that is, I think that is how it's, it's the high watermark.
So somebody out there fly-fishing, we have no control over. And if you're bothering anybody, they're nothing in their baked containers out there. Or when they climb up and step onto the bank and decide to cast one more time, then that's when they would be in the jurisdiction of the park.
I believe so. I don't know if there's any regard to the access and getting to the middle of the river, like the banks or anything like that, that I'm not sure.
I don't think we can stop people from walking into the river.
No, no, I, I, I don't really want to.
So, I think we can leave the signage, that, that doesn't need to be part of the ordinance discussion, we'll figure that out later. But the, the fishing pass idea is intriguing. I mean, on the one hand, I kind of like the idea, I think, I think especially little kids would really dig it. You know, that they could, they could come in and get a fishing, in their mind, they could get a fishing license, and we could talk about, you know, the importance of.
Well, I think that discussion originally came just by coming up with a way to help educate them, so they're not down to just trash in the place, and they, they learn to take care and respect the environment and do it through something outdoor rather than on the island or something like that, right? At least that's where my head was on that.
Again, I don't know whether this would be something that would be in the ordinance, something like a fishing pass?
Right, well, you could do that, it could be like a registration, you need a license to fish. You could have a separate license, but you could have people demonstrate they are licensed, and that.
Well, the idea here is not a license, this is for like little kids. It'd be like a, a fishing pass where they would get a brochure.
Oh, it would be almost like a public relations thing where that, yeah, I mean, no, that doesn't have to be codified. Staff could just create a program.
So what are your, what are your thoughts about that idea? Do you think that's a good?
I think it's a good idea, as an option, not a requirement.
Right. Okay. Right, okay. I think that takes care of the fishing. Oh, fishing is prohibited from any bridge within the village. We might want to, because there, the other place I'm thinking about is there by Berry Point Bridge, where that railing is, right by where the dam is. I'm not sure we want people, you know, fishing there, because there's no, there's no way to successfully, there's no way to safely or humanely land a fish from up there without hauling it up, right? So.
No bridge.
So. How can we handle that? Any thoughts about how to handle that in the?
Well, well aesthetically, if you, I mean, there, the way to deal with it would be in, in these areas, but not as otherwise posted.
I was just.
And then you could, but if you were against posting a sign, you got, that's a bigger problem. We'd have to designate it in the ordinance. But if you don't mind posting a sign, we could just designate that there are areas where fishing isn't allowed per signage, and then you put a sign there.
Because that's the only other place I can think of. Can you think of any other places where?
I don't think that's safe to fish on any bridges.
Well, certainly the bridges, but other, can you think of any other place other than the bridges and that railing I'm talking about?
The trestle. With hopefully.
That's a long line. I think people need to sail through railroads. Okay, I think it's, or as otherwise posted.
Or as otherwise posted, very good.
Okay. Picnicking. Seventy-two hours in advance for groups larger than six. And then we'll handle the, the leave no trace deposit in the, the policy side. That doesn't have to go in here. Obviously, we're not going to allow any of the things that are listed here. Well, we would, we would allow the, we would allow volleyball nets or something if they're at the scout cabin, right?
Correct. It would just be whether or not you want to allow them in every park or specific to the cabin.
I think that kind of thing should be limited.
I think that's, that's your jurisdiction, I mean, if they're having, if somebody's having something in Big Ball Park, you know, they set up a temporary volleyball net for their, that's something.
We could let John handle it.
Anything that requires a permit, that's part of the.
Yeah, and you can handle that.
And there were, there were times that, you know, we had a wedding at Big Ball Park, so, yeah, that's why we tried to leave that open, so that could be handled administratively.
Would the scouts use it, you allow them to set their tents up?
Yes.
For your resources.
So really, the only consideration is what, what triggers the permit process, so if it's that number, then all of those other things would come under our jurisdiction, and I would administer those.
I, I think six is a fair number. Anything, anything larger than six has to go through the permitting process. So in terms of, in terms of the ordinance, and the only real changes that we have is, we're gonna say are otherwise posted with regard to fishing, we're gonna change ten to six in terms of the numbers, and then we're gonna have a parenthetical that lists the, the parks where picnicking is allowed.
Got it.
We agreed on six, I still think six is too low.
At the parks? What, I mean, right now, it says ten.
Ten would be fine still for me. I mean, we're talking about parks, ten people, it's not a lot of people.
That's one group, right? So like, if there's three different groups, that each has six.
I think six is a good number, especially when you're taking into consideration the restrooms, I mean, those are portable bathrooms, right? If you've got three groups of six, that's eighteen people.
I guess what I'm saying is, if you've got ten people, you're gonna suddenly become two groups of five, right? I mean...
Oh, right. Well, maybe, but you know...
Break two blankets. So why even...
But ten, ten, you know, I just don't think ten people are gonna wanna, are gonna go out to Big Ball Park and just throw sandwiches down.
Ten people?
So I got, I got...
Unless you're gonna go with... The question, though, is whether they need a permit or not.
You're right.
So you could have a picnic, however you want, it's just whether you need a permit.
It's a six.
What did you just say?
Can you drag down all the beverages in the park right now?
Only at the scout cabin.
In, only at scout cabin if you're ready, right?
Right.
There you go.
It's gotta keep the group small.
Alex, six. The rec department was talking, was talking eight, and they backed down to six.
And if there are concerns about this, let's, let's start, yeah, let's start on the smaller side. So we'll, you'll bring this back to us then.
Yes.
Okay. Rex needs that. Last but not least, is a presentation and discussion of the five-year financial forecast plan twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two. Director Johnson?
Yeah.
About this, I think about two years ago, maybe, maybe four years ago, maybe six years ago, I don't know how long ago, if I lose it. But when Flood Brothers took over our garbage contract, they gave us the option to donate a certain amount of, resident donated a certain amount of dollars, they would match the dollars, and in return, the resident would get a pink garbage can for cancer awareness. I've had quite a few residents that, that we had voted down, I, I still don't quite understand why, but that got voted down, and I'd like to just bring that back up as a consideration, that's something that I think, I think Ellen Herta probably said it the best, I think one of the people on the board at the time says, well, we'd have like a rainbow of garbage cans. And Ellen said, that'd be great. What, what would say...
Ellen Hamilton.
Yeah, Ellen Hamilton, what would say, oh, yeah, Ellen Hamilton, that's all right, Ellen Herta, that's, sorry, Ellen.
We could put it on the next agenda. I think that would be something worth putting on the agenda, sort of residents.
I have a recollection, though, didn't they say they come with some sticker or some banner or something in lieu of the garbage can?
That's what, that's what they ended up giving us, is like a little...
But has anyone exercised that, or?
Yeah.
Oh, so there are, a lot.
Can I just clarify something, Trustee Valerie, it never got voted down, there's never a vote on that. It was discussed, the question was raised whether or not we wanted pink garbage cans, and before anyone voted or really gave much of an opinion, Flood Brother says, well, we'll just do stickers. And so he said, fine, then, if that's what you wanna do. It was never voted on.
Well, I would like it to be brought back to...
That's fine. It's fine, I just don't want people to think we voted down pink garbage cans, because that's just not true.
Okay.
It's still an option?
Yeah, let's make research that Flood has pink garbage...
I believe it is still an option that they asked.
I actually have some, like, the golf outing.
We'll, we'll get this on the next agenda.
He was willing to drop it off at my house, and I didn't wanna quite, you know, run upstream that hard, yeah.
Okay. All right, so we'll get that on the next agenda to discuss. Okay. Director Johnson.
Tony, before you, is our five-year financial forecast spanning from fiscal year twenty eighteen through fiscal year twenty twenty-two. The purpose of this forecast is to provide the board with information concerning projected revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for all the village funds for a five-year period. This forecast should assist in identifying areas and opportunities where revenues and expenditures may need to be adjusted. Much of the information and data used in preparation of this forecast has been obtained from internal financial records, trend analysis, discussions with various department managers concerning short and long-term expectations, and external sources such as the Illinois Municipal League, Illinois Department of Revenue, and other agencies. The narrative and graphs contained in this forecast primarily, focused primarily on the more significant sources of revenue for the village, such as property taxes, sales taxes, per capita taxes. Some of the key items identified by staff as having a direct and significant impact on the village's short-term and long-term finances, finances are, in the twenty seventeen levy excluding new EAV, is expected to increase by approximately two point one percent. This is the largest it's been in the past several years. This is also the first year with positive EAV growth, so that helped our revenue projections going forward. Of this total tax levy, a greater portion is expected to be contributed to the police pension during fiscal year eighteen. The amount recommended contribution for, has increased approximately ten percent, which equates to one hundred and twenty thousand. Although building permit fees have experienced significant growth over the past several years, such activity is expected to moderate or experience a decrease in coming years. Water and sewer revenues are expected to remain relatively neutral over the next time As a result of these projected trends, village staff has identified the following areas for consideration by the board as part of the upcoming budget discussions, possible adjustment to the water and sewer fees, this will be discussed more in October, review of fees and rates within the general fund, adjustments to the annual operating management fee charged to the parking lot fund from the general fund, and potential drawdown of excess surplus held up her month. Based on feedback from the board in prior years, we've taken, taken a little less conservative approach with our revenue projections. One thing I wanted to point out is the projection for twenty eighteen is currently balanced within the general fund for unassigned fund balance. The current expectation for the end of twenty seventeen is a surplus of approximately eighty-two thousand in the general fund unassigned fund balance. Are there any questions or specific things you'd like me to discuss?
I wanna make sure I understood what you just said. So I'm looking at the five-year financial forecast, forecast plan summary. So you're saying that, because this, this chart shows a year-end projection of unassigned fund of sixty thousand, five sixty-nine, you're saying it's eighty-two?
Without transfers, it's eighty-two. So if we do no transfers... If we do no...
Oh, okay, that's the eighty-two, five sixty-nine, okay. Okay, got it, okay. Questions for Director Johnson? There's a lot in here to digest.
I think, I just make one, one kind of global comment, when I'm looking at these, I'm looking at two thousand and eighteen, so I'm not signing off on nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, I think it's our job as a board to find new sources of revenue and find ways to cut expenses, and historically, village staff has been very good, very diligent at doing that. So while we do have a pretty significant financial headwind, I, I think that we'll be able to moderate that a little bit from what we see here. So I don't want people to get too alarmed, but there should be an awareness that it's not gonna get better under, unless things change.
And, and there will be, Director Johnson, village manager can address this too, I mean, there will be other revenue opportunities, like for example, consolidated dispatch, that that's gonna, that will have a positive effect on these numbers as well. So, is that that? Thank you, Director.
It was a very good job.
Thank you. Business, we have no need for executive session, so I have this promotion, second adjourned, special for Mr. Loneston.
Second.
Second for Mr. Pollak, please call the roll.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Dees.
Aye.
Trustee Loneston.
Aye.
Trustee Valerie.
Right.
Trustee Sette.
Aye.
Trustee Peter.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you, good night.